I call this Celine City Council meeting to order. If you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Girbaugh, CEO, McClellan, Mitchell, and Dillon. Mayor Protam Taha will be absent tonight. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, treasurer Bennett will not be joining us, DPW director Fordice, wastewater treatment superintendent Skoll, and police chief Hart are also with us. The rest of you who are in the audience, we encourage you to sign in in the back to my left. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, noting an email that was sent by councilwoman Mitchell earlier this afternoon indicating that she would like to discuss progress on Smokehouse BBQ 52, which will be added as the fourth discussion item under the discussion portion of our agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to add something else to the discussion portion, please.
Please.
At our last meeting, it was mentioned in public comment about maple oaks, maple cove soil erosion. I'd like to just know if there was any follow-up or any information available on that.
Okay, so that will then be the fifth item under the discussion portion of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Simult.
Moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Mitchell. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Motion to excuse the absence of Mayor Protam Taha.
So moved.
Moved by Dillon, seconded by McClellan. All those in favor of excusing the absence of our colleagues signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. There are no presentations this evening, so we come to the first citizen comment on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Mary Hess, thank you. As I voiced my concern at the last meeting, I appreciate that being addressed on the maple coves, it definitely, of course, the planning commission, of which you and Mr. Girbaugh authorized the development, it is really becoming precarious and very dangerous to the duplex next door. The next day after the council meeting, I called the county, and they were kind enough to send me a copy of the erosion permit, soil erosion permit. And the gentleman called me back in the afternoon who oversees this project, and he said that their responsibility is from the property line in, that it would be up to our city engineer and building department for any concerns from the property line out. I would hope that we could, because it definitely, it's getting a lot of attention and more as time goes by, and if you could possibly address this concern. Thank you very much.
Are there additional citizen comments? No, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Sir, motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve as submitted, Mr. Girbaugh?
Correct.
Thank you, sir, seconded by councilmember CEO. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move to new business item 18-3. This is request for reimbursement for damaged mailbox. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the letter from Benjamin Schaefer regarding reimbursement for a mailbox damaged, for the mailbox damaged, enter file.
Move to manage.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. Obviously, the paperwork that was submitted to you as part of your packet speaks for itself. Mr. Campbell, do you have any additional remarks you'd like to share at this time?
No, sir, unless there's questions, we'd be happy to do our best to answer them.
Very good. Are there questions for the city manager? We'll begin with Ms. Mitchell and then move to Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Campbell, I guess my concern is that we're being asked to replace something without understanding what the state was before damage. So we don't have any photos, we don't have any receipts. Certainly, if city vehicles damage private property, I think it's reasonable to have a discussion, but I'm hesitant to make a decision without all of the information.
I can comment on that, maybe Mr. CEO can as well. We provided to council what was provided to us via this gentleman.
So is there, is there any opportunity to receive more information?
I guess I'm unclear as to what information, what additional information would be helpful to allow you to make an informed decision?
I would like documentation of the cost of what was there before it was damaged. So we have a quote on a replacement cost, but, you know, are we replacing a Ford truck for a Ford truck? Are we replacing, you know, a Cadillac for a Ford truck? I just want to make sure that what we're replacing is equitable.
We can reach out to the gentleman, although I don't know that he was the owner of the property when the mailbox was installed. Mr. CEO, would you care to comment?
Yes, Mr. Schaefer, I think, is one of the original owners of the property there. These mailboxes were installed as part of the builder's, part of the amenity that the builder provided for the particular property. It was a two-box post, so the post itself held two mailboxes, one for Mr. Schaefer and one for his next-door neighbor. The mailbox was there before the accident. I can attest to that because I drive by it every day. And the circumstance is apparently that the neighborhood association requires a particular style and from a particular vendor. So that's the reason the thing is so darn expensive. However, I did look online this evening just for rural mailboxes and posts, and the prices are all over the place. If we would consider anything, we might want to consider upping the amount that the city policy would pay in the case of a future, or even in this case, having the mailbox destroyed, if you will, by a action of the city of some sort or another. The mailboxes, these days, I'm sure that when the policy went into effect, $35 was more than sufficient to pay for a post. The post in question was cast aluminum. There was, like I said, there were two mailboxes there, not just one. They included also a box underneath for the delivery of newspapers as part of the box itself. So just looking online, the mailbox prices range anywhere from $600 down to, just at first glance, it looks like maybe $59.99.
Well, here's, Mr. CEO and I spoke briefly about this issue prior to our last council meeting. And first, I believe it's worth noting, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, the vast majority of our residents do not have mailboxes on the curb. Is that correct, Mr. Fordice? I'm thinking of neighborhoods like Wildwood, Northview, my own neighborhood, what was originally identified or designated as Celine Heights. Most of them have neighborhood mailboxes or mailboxes that are mounted to the home.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it'd be the majority, but certainly the, all the newer suburbs from the '70s on have community mailbox style. So it's more of the, more of the older unit or that have curbside one, although the arboretum would be an exception.
An anomaly, yeah, an exception rather than the rule. The reason I make that point is, you know, my mailbox cannot be damaged by, by the city of Celine. So therefore, we would never consider reimbursing me or a comparable property owner for a damaged mailbox. I would be amenable to increasing the amount that the city compensates individuals or property owners. I too did a little bit of research, and my personal opinion is that 35 is sort of woefully insufficient. When you look at the mailbox, you're indeed correct, Mr. CEO, based on my research, it was sort of all over the map, but then you're talking about labor and installation as well. So, and I came up with sort of a round number of $100, but I'd just throw that out there for discussion and for consideration. Let me get Mr. Girbaugh and then back to councilwoman Mitchell.
Just a couple points of clarification. Do you know when that, the original dollar amount was established?
Actually, just a few years ago, we used to actually do that, where we would, if someone, if we, you know, damaged a post through snow plowing, whether it be the actual physical plow or the snow coming off the plow, which is typically the case, is the snow, the force of the snow, we used to go and we'd get a post and we'd put in a new, even though, again, as I've mentioned in my communique, I believe, a couple weeks ago, that, you know, we do have governmental immunity in that, I mean, again, as long as there's no negligence, you're just doing your thing, and the snow comes off, and it's not uncommon to do that, and certainly, there's a number of jurisdictions that don't provide anything, it's just, you know, we're sorry, but it's cost of doing business. But, but so, because it took more time and labor, and of course, you know, we're down folks from our crews from a number of years ago, we thought, hey, let's, we'll just, we'll give them, we would give residents something for their loss, but not tie up a staff member to put it in.
No, I just wanted to know if it was an old dollar amount, if it was like 20 years old, because some of our fees haven't been updated like that yet. The other question is, I believe the road commission, if it's in the right-of-way and they take it out, you're out of luck, correct?
I would agree with that.
Yeah, because I have my, I have a rural mailbox where I have a post out in the front of my yard, and I know it got ate away from the salt and the snow and everything on it, so I had to replace it. So I think maybe a dollar adjustment might be reasonable, but at this point, I think somewhere between that amount that the mayor said and the $35, maybe 50, maybe 75.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Girbaugh. Ms. McClellan? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mitchell.
So that helps, that the neighborhood association is requiring it to pay. It seems that if our past practice has been to pay 35, and there's some question about labor, or whether the neighbor who's lost their mailbox, that's, but it just seems, you know, asking for almost $800 for a mailbox seems exorbitant. And at the same time, I want to be responsible if we've damaged something. So I guess I, I'm eager to see what my, my fellow council members are thinking.
Okay, I threw out 100. Mr. Girbaugh threw out between 50 and 75. Mr. CEO, can I jump back to you and then grab Ms. Dillon?
When you and I originally talked about this at the last council meeting, and you suggested 100, I thought, given not only the cost of the post, the mailbox, and the labor, that $100 was a suitable amount.
Good, very good. Ms. Dillon?
Oh, I'm struggling with this because, I guess I'd like to preface it and back up for a quick second, ask, Mr. Campbell, how many mailboxes are damaged per year?
Jeff, I'm going to need your assistance on this, please.
It varies from year to year, but in the neighborhood of half a dozen.
Okay.
There are occasions, like this past weekend, that storm, if it had gone just a little bit more, and we had to put on our front plows, then, you know, we could easily knock 10 off their posts in one storm. But typical is about half a dozen.
Thank you. I guess we're, I, my big concern is that I'd really like to see these residents made whole. I drove by Mr. Schaefer's house today and took a peruse at his mailbox, and they're very fancy schmancy, and they're obviously all identical in that neighborhood. So they're a very good, heavy gauge quality, and I'm sure that's part of why they're so expensive. So I do have a concern that, you know, he's going to have to replace that mailbox with what was there. That's the requirement of his association, I would assume. And I just, you know, as much as of a hard pill it is to swallow, I do feel like we do have an obligation to make him whole. Now, that being said, now if the next person were to have a Step Two plastic one that costs, you know, $78 at Lowe's, then maybe that's all they would get. And if they can show proof, it's just a, you know, a replacement of what was there.
That was, the disparities of styles of mailbox and condition of mailboxes was one of the reasons that we instituted this policy. We, at that time, we were dealing with one that was knocked down. The post was rotted, there was one screw holding it in, and, you know, it, basically, we drove by and it fell over. You know, should we spend $300 of materials and labors to, you know, even put a basic mailbox in there? And that, and additionally, it's, it's difficult to, especially when you're dealing with this kind of dollar amount, really determine fault. As Mr. Campbell mentioned, it's very common amongst road agencies that if it's the force of the snow that knocks your mailbox off, that means your mailbox wasn't strong enough.
Right.
And you get no compensation for that. If they physically contact it with the plow, then you get a standard rural mailbox on a post. This one, and then also my time trying to figure out fault. You know, was it us? Was it some other plow truck? There's a private road within the arboretum that, you know, a private plow service takes care of, and I'm sure there's a number of driveways in there that are plowed. Could have been somebody else, maybe. When I asked Mr. Schaefer what, what color the plow was, so I could narrow down within our equipment what might have hit it, he didn't know, because he didn't actually see it. So, you know, a small dollar amount like this allows me to say, yes, we were plowing at that time, and this mailbox has been damaged. You know, that's very easy and quick to determine, and then you can, you know, issue a check and move on. But when we're talking about hundreds of dollars, then you need to do some detective work and really try to figure out, you know, whether or not, whether or not it was the force of the snow, whether or not there was physical contact with the plow, you know, and track that down. And that takes a lot of time.
Ms. Mitchell, and then Ms. McClellan?
I have nothing further.
Nothing at this time. Ms. McClellan?
Yeah, I mean, I think somewhere in the middle, you know, I think, I think 35 is probably too low. I think 100 is probably reasonable. Just a quick mailbox search here, and you come up with anything from $24 to the max, looks to be around $400. Obviously, that's not with installation and that kind of thing, but 700, I think, is exorbitant.
Back to Mr. Girbaugh, thank you, ma'am.
And I seem to recall when this subdivision was built, these were all private roads, and when those mailboxes were installed, we probably would not have allowed them had they been public streets.
So they did go in as private streets that were then later accepted as public streets. The mailboxes are, as far as I could tell, they're U.S. Postal Service, you know, certified or appropriate. So I don't know that we would have said, no, you can't put that in there.
But if they all matched, they probably were something that the condo, or the homeowners' association decided upon.
Right.
Based upon private streets. And I know that we have raised that issue before when things have been put into the right-of-way. And so that's one of my other points of contention, is that we could always go back to the condominium association agreement before we took on the streets.
Yeah.
And what we agreed to in terms of what we were responsible for and what we were not.
Yeah, so certainly originally, when the, when that development went in, the city did not plow those streets.
Right. From my perspective, I think we're being, the fact that now we have the streets on, but we're being generous even providing 75 to 100, because it is in the right-of-way, the snow needs to go somewhere, and that's the reason why the lawn extensions are pretty much identified that way.
Yep.
Real quick.
Just for context, though, you know, from a budget standpoint, you're talking, on average, about six at 35, so that's what, $210 versus six at 100, that's $600. I mean, it's all, it's all tax dollars. So I would just, again, I, certainly respectfully, again, as Mr. Girbaugh pointed out, road commission, if they take off your, your mailbox, it's, you know, you don't get anything, you don't get any remuneration for it. So I just, like, because it is tax dollars, I mean, some people, I don't know this, depending on what your, your homeowner's insurance potentially, I know that in this case, it wouldn't work after talking with Mr. CEO, because I think Mr. CEO asked Mr. Schaefer the same question, but, but again, I just, you know, we need to, we need to drive a certain speed to move the snow, and it's always going to be an issue. And I just, a quick, just a quick anecdotal story, I can remember growing up in northern Michigan and following a county plow truck in, and unfortunately, it was not uncommon to see mail go up into the air, because they just, especially if they had their front, their wing plows on, as Mr. Fordice alluded, if we put our front plows on, it'd be real easy to, to take those out, not even know that we hit them with the snow, so.
All right, let's proceed to vote on the motion to acknowledge receipt, and then the chair would be happy to entertain a subsequent motion if someone from the dais would like to offer one. We have a motion on the floor moved by CEO, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge receipt of the letter from Benjamin Schaefer regarding reimbursement for mailbox damage, enter file. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion that someone would like to offer? Mr. CEO?
I've moved to raise the stipend from $35 to $100 for the loss of a mailbox.
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Mitchell. Thank you. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CEO, seconded by Mitchell, to increase the reimbursement rate from 35 to 100. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you. We move on now to new business item 18-31, ordinance number 800, an ordinance to amend chapter 87, article 3 of the City of Celine Code of Ordinances to add sections 86, 55 regarding required motor vehicle and motorcycle insurance. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 7, 2018 memo from police chief Hart to approve or not to approve ordinance number 800, an ordinance to amend sections, chapter, excuse me, 86, article 3 of the City of Celine Code of Ordinances to add sections 87, 55 regarding required motor vehicle and motorcycle insurance.
Acknowledged and approved.
Thank you. Mr. CEO, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Mitchell. Chief Hart, would you care to go, would you care to comment on this, and maybe speak to your memo of February the 7th?
Thank you very much. This basically came to our attention through Jesse O'Jack, the city attorney, and what he was seeing in court was a lot of folks that were issued the no proof of insurance ticket, showing up to the court to get it signed off, and maybe there wasn't a lot of diligence that was done to ensure that the person had insurance on the day of the violation. So this gives our police officers an opportunity to use their discretion at the time of a traffic accident or a traffic stop, where someone may or may not have, or may not have their insurance certificate with them. So this would offer an opportunity for a no proof, or I'm sorry, a no insurance ticket, at which time, when it gets to court, Mr. O'Jack would have the opportunity to then review the insurance certificate, ensure that the individual did in fact have insurance at the day, date, and time of either the traffic stop or the accident, and then certainly he would amend that if they could provide proof, and then they would go about the normal no proof of insurance course of action. And if not, it would be held to a higher standard. This is a misdemeanor violation, $200 to $500 fine, and it really holds that one in five drivers in the state of Michigan that does not have auto owners' insurance that are out on our streets. So it's kind of an accountability tool as well.
Very good. Positive change, chief. Thank you for your work on this, and please extend our compliments to our prosecuting attorney Jesse O'Jack as well. If you hang, hang tight, I believe there may be some questions for you. Are there questions from the dais? Mr. Girbaugh?
Can you tell me exactly where the fine dollar amount came from, the 200 to 500? Is that state law or something we're recommending?
That is something that's within that MCL that was cited, and it's also in other jurisdictions ordinances as well, that have been adopted locally. So it's, it's kind of a median-type fine.
Okay, is this consistent with the other, like Chelsea and Myland and our other communities surrounding us right now?
This, this actually was drafted from Grand Rapids, so I did not particularly look at what Chelsea and what other local communities were doing.
I'm just a little concerned of, this has been an issue too, where a lot of individuals that are lower income or whatever are getting stung with some of these types of fines and things, and they're the individuals that can't necessarily afford the insurance and the cost of this, and the activities that go to court. So I'm just wanting to make sure that what we're putting in place is consistent across our side of the state, not necessarily Grand Rapids.
I understand that concern. Why don't we proceed in this direction, unless there's objection from the dais, Mr. Girbaugh? You asked for some examples and for us to compare our rates to some neighboring municipalities, so Chelsea, Dexter, Tecumseh, communities similar in size and demographics. Chief, could you gather that information and relay it to city manager Campbell, and perhaps he could disseminate it via his weekly communique?
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you. Additional questions for the chief? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by CEO, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge receipt, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 18-32. This is Metro Act Right-of-Way Telecommunication Permit Verizon. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the February 7, 2018 memo from Nick Curcio and to approve or not to approve the application to access to and ongoing use of public ways by telecommunications providers, excuse me, under the Metropolitan, my goodness, Extension Telecommunication Right-of-Ways Oversight Act.
Move to acknowledge receipt of the memo?
Moved by Girbaugh to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Campbell, do you want to comment on the memo of February 7?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you may recall, a few months ago, council had a similar Metro Act permit application before you, and to, to access the rights-of-way for fiber. So based on the laws, as you, as you see in the memo, we have to have a really, 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 really good reason to not approve, and we don't, I mean, we believe it meets the criteria, and so the recommendation would be to, to approve.
Questions? Start with Mr. Girbaugh, and then we'll move to councilwoman Mitchell.
Can you clarify for me, and I guess I didn't read through all the paperwork, but I was looking at the map and everything, where exactly they're going to be laying this? Because if they're going down our Michigan Avenue, I'm really concerned of what they're going to rip up again, what we just had done.
Well, it won't be in the, it won't be in the road. I mean, it'll be in the, it'll be in the terrace areas.
There is no other spots outside of, that's what I'm just wondering. I don't know when they get down into it. Sometimes they might have to cut across something.
Yeah, well, they may have to, yeah. I mean, that's always, right, that's always the, the big thing, right? Whenever you have a new road and the first cut in someplace, but, but yeah, and I...
Because one of my concerns is when Verizon, the last time they did it, they went across South Ann Arbor Street, and that road wasn't even a year old, and that cut has always been a bad patch. I mean, it never was right, and I don't know what we can do in terms of, I don't know what recourse do we have in terms to make sure that the road, whatever it is, is turned back to at least what it was, not just a quick patch.
Well, right, well, I mean, we, you may recall too, I can, and I know Mr. Fordice and, and could certainly cite a number of those. I think there's, there's one on, on Maple, just north of the Michigan Ave intersection, where it was actually for a, not for, it wasn't for communications right-of-way, but it was a utility connection, and that particular, I mean, it sank, and I mean, we had them come in and redo it, and so I think it's, you know, we certainly can, can do our best to, to kind of run roughshod, if you will, on them to make sure that they, they do it to the best of ability. But yeah, I mean, that's always a challenge to make sure that they do it right, and it doesn't settle and the like, so.
And there was never any kind of, well, not just recourse from the state's perspective, they just don't, I don't know, they don't give a rat's, but that's one of my concerns on that one. The other one being, and I am really disappointed on this one, is that they're putting it through for all the commercial and business, but not for residential. If we would have actually had this for residential, we would actually have some competition to Comcast and Frontier, and it's kind of interesting how that plays out in this situation, and of course, now with net neutrality being all in the dumpster, this would have been one of the benefits to the community if they would actually extend it to residential, so I'm disappointed that we couldn't push back on this to do that.
Sure, understood.
Additional questions? Ms. Mitchell?
So just some quick background for my question. For those of you who aren't familiar, some months back, there was a piece of telephone wire equipment hanging down in the neighborhood, in one of our neighborhoods, and I called it in, and I learned at that time that there is no provision for these companies that, that benefit from these right-of-ways and benefit from using our, our structure. There is no, there's no responsibility for that company to clean up after the wires are done being used. So the telephone wires that you see are not being used, but they are going to be our responsibility to clean up. And so as, as that background, is there a language, what power do we have to, to write into the contract that we want this equipment removed, or, you know, if there's a safety issue like those wires hanging down, that we are not on the hook for that?
It's standard per the, per the Metro Act, the... It's standard per the, per the Metro Act, this is standard language, so that we really don't have the ability to write anything in or modify it, unfortunately.
That's too bad. All right. If I needed to ask?
Sure. No, it's a good question. I mean, it's, it's frustrating, and I share your concerns. I share Mr. Girba's concerns, and we just continue. And of course, there, there's the Public Service Commission, but again, sometimes that's difficult and, and as far as lengthy is trying to get any results, but, but we will, certainly we, just like with anybody's doing something in our, in our right of way, we try and keep an eye on them and try and do our best to make sure that, that, that they do it the right way.
I appreciate that.
Additional questions? Ms. Dillon?
Just for clarification, are, will all of this be underground, or will there be some that will be above?
I believe, I believe it's underground.
It's all underground?
I believe. Yes, so, yes ma'am. Yes.
Okay. And so I guess I wanted to, I have the same concerns that Mr. Girba had expressed earlier, which is, what is their timeframe for doing? I mean, are they going to try to rip up Michigan Avenue all at once? Is this a staged project? I mean, do we have any say in that?
I believe they'll be in the terrace areas, so they won't, typically they, they're not, unless they, of course, if they have to go across the road to make a connection, but they're typically going to be in the terrace areas, not, not in the, not in the travel lanes. So they'll, though typically you see the directional boring, where they're boring under, underground. They have a directional bore rig, and then they have a pit at the other end, and they're, they're, they're doing their, their directional boring to get the fiber optic from point A to point B. So like you said, they're not, they're not typically in the street per se. They're on the edge, like our, what I would call the terrace or the tree lawn area.
Right. So they wouldn't need to close a lane or anything?
Typically, they don't. I won't, I'm not going to promise you that they, they won't have, just, but typically they, they do that on the side. Like you said, they're all within that terrace area.
Okay. Going back to what Mrs. Mitchell said, I, I have reservations. I understand it's a boilerplate contract, but I just feel like it doesn't offer the city any type of protections and-
Don't disagree.
I, I just feel like, is there a benefit for the city in, in doing this?
Well, in theory, there's a benefit for our commercial residents, right, for those companies to be able to access that and use the high-speed fiber. So that, that's, but that's, that's essentially your lobbyist getting stuff done in Lansing.
Okay. And if we were to deny this request, what would the ramifications be?
Potential lawsuit violations, I mean, I, I'd have to look exactly, but I mean, we would not, we would be in violation of the law.
Okay. We kind of feel it's not being restored. We don't have an option. It's like, you can sign or you can sign.
Sure. Yep.
So-
There, there's similar legislation trying to go through right now for the, what they're called the small cells, for the cellular, the cellular towers, that they want to be able to put basically anywhere and everywhere, inside and outside of the, the right of way.
Right.
And so the municipal league, as well as the county, the MAC, as well as MTA, are fighting to, to get better language, but it's-
So my last question, because I can see hands up on the other end, is they're boring down Michigan Avenue. What happens if they're hitting our new water lines and our, our new electric lines, things like that?
Yeah, just like, well, just like any project, they have to repair them.
Right. At their expense?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
I don't have a date yet. We got 45 days, so we got January 16th.
Additional questions? Mr. Girba?
And one of the concern, one of the reasons for allowing this is the business thing, because we've always talked about trying to get this high fiber into our industrial parks and everything, which is a great idea, but is there anything in our recourse? Because we know we have a lot of dark fiber that goes through a town, our town, or has. Is there any recourse at some point where we can push back to Verizon to say, you need to light that up so that our businesses can get to it, the fact that we're allowing you to run it through the town? I'm concerned that they're going to do this, and then of course, like they always have done, they just don't turn it on for us. They let it bypass because we don't have enough clients or whatever to cost for them to extend it out. I don't know what their real, it'd be nice to have some more information on what their real plan is to be in terms of actually activating this and allowing our businesses to use it, because I think that's where downtown is a big thing for that need. So just a little more information if we could have going forward to be able to share with the EDC and so forth.
Sure. We can, I mean, we can certainly request information from the company.
I mean, if they're going to require it, I also want to record it of them to some kind of guarantee.
Did you also want to inquire about residential access?
Yeah, it'd be nice to know. I mean, and here they definitely say not, not doing residential, but I want to make sure that we do get the commercial in here because that is going to help our business growth.
Okay. Were there additional questions? Mr. Campbell confirmed something for me?
Yeah, it's going to be with, it's going to be outside the 45 days.
Okay, all right. Just seeing if it would have been possible to potentially postpone this, but it is not. If there are no additional questions, then we'll proceed to vote on the motion on the floor. It's been moved by Girba, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion carries unanimously. Is there a subsequent motion either to approve or not to approve?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Girba to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. Mr. Campbell, did you make note of those questions and concerns that Mr. Girba has that we can relay to the company?
I'm in the process right now.
Very good. Okay. We'll get feedback as soon as they respond.
Excuse me, I do have a question. Their letter was dated January 10. It was received by the clerk on the 16th, and we're getting a memo back on February 7. Can we in the future request faster turnaround time from our council so that we're not up against the wall like this? I mean, I know we're obviously not their only client, but had we had this for last week's meeting, we could have, we could have possibly postponed, I think, depending on where the window fell. I think we're just shy of it day-wise.
Correct, yeah.
So I, I guess that's something I'd like to be more cognizant of in the future is the deadlines, so that if things need to be postponed for additional information, we have that opportunity.
And that, yeah, there's no issue with that. The only concern would be we've got to provide staff and legal counsel ample time to, to review and make recommendations. But certainly, we, we will continue to encourage staff to move as expeditiously and getting things on, on agendas for, for consideration and action. Any additional discussion? It's been properly moved by Girba, seconded by McClellan, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is commission committee and task force reports from council members. About reports or other announcements. I have one, and I believe an email was sent to, well, if it wasn't sent to everybody, that would come as a surprise to me, but just wanted to confirm that tomorrow at the Saline Senior Center, they are hosting a new event from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, a chili cook-off, and we have a number of local entities participating, Brewed Awakenings, the Saline Fire Department, Dan's Tavern, Oscar's Sports Grill, and others. Tickets are $3, and you can vote for your favorite local chili, local chili. Exciting, fun event, new, like you said, at the Saline Senior Center. And you don't need to be a Saline Senior Center member or a Saline Area Senior to participate. All are welcome. So again, that's tomorrow, 2:00 to 3:00 PM at the Saline Area Senior Center. Additional reports or announcements? Mr. Girba?
Due to the snowstorm, the Historical Society had to postpone the Bixby Marionette presentation, but that will be rescheduled for sometime in October. We're looking forward to that because I think it's one of those things that unfortunately you don't get to see those puppets the way we'd like to, so looking forward to it later on.
Very good. Additional reports or announcements? Then we move on to our wastewater treatment plant update. Mr. Skalp?
I really don't have much to report. It's only been a week since I was here before, but I did, I do want to mention that Webster was on site for Thursday, all-day Thursday, and in the morning on Friday. They seem to be really top-notch. They sweat the details. I'm really impressed with them as a company. The NOVA filters are up and running, and I had two questions brought up last time, and I'm not sure who, who brought them up, but regarding the NOVA filters as lo, as far as their life expectancy. The parts, the individual parts are 15 to 20 years, so you could replace the wash motor and keep them going longer. You know, you can replace the, the parts as they fail to keep them going longer than 20 years, but they're 20, 15 to 20 years is the normal life expectancy of the components. And the question regarding can we use, continue to use NOVA filters if we went to retrofit the other filter bay with different filters if we decide to go that direction? And the answer to that is, 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 there is no answer to that till we determine what direction we're going. There's no reason we can't keep the filters going, but we may not be able to use that, that room due to the pressure loss over the filters. And again, it would depend on what model or what style we go to.
Very good. Thank you for your follow-up on that, Bob. Are there, are there questions for our wastewater treatment superintendent? That was easy enough. We'll see you in March. Thank you for your time. We move on to Smokehouse BBQ 52, referencing a email that Councilwoman Mitchell sent to all of us earlier today. I cannot comment on the issue of the Porta John. I'll let Mr. Campbell deal with that, but I am in contact via email once a month with the proprietor, Phil Tolliver. I actually emailed him last week to see how things were progressing and to offer any assistance. Things are moving slower than he would like, but he's still moving in the right direction. I, I was not present at the last downtown or, he used to be Downtown Merchant, so Downtown Property and Business Owners Meeting?
Correct.
But he did attend that and verbalized on that occasion that he was looking to open in late February. So he's experienced some delays. I wouldn't be shocked or surprised if, if that opening wasn't pushed back, but he seems, every time I interact with him, he seems upbeat, positive, and I reaffirm not only that the city is here to support him, but that the community is very eager for him to open. Mr. Campbell, do you want to comment on the other issues that Councilwoman Mitchell raised in her email?
Certainly. So, I mean, they certainly, they have to provide restroom facilities for the workers. I will check in tomorrow first thing to see if there's a different location, whether it be the alley or, or some other place, but they do need to provide this. I don't know if, if for some reason they're not able to utilize restrooms in, in the building, so maybe if they're not able to do that, then, then obviously that's, obviously I'm guessing that's why it showed up all of a sudden. So we'll check into that. I'll, I will report back to, to council. And then as far as, I think the other question was the permitting agency for the dumpster would be MDOT. MDOT is the one that is permitted. I do not know. I will also try and follow up on if they have a maximum number of extensions and that type of thing. So, but certainly, certainly in agreement that it's, it's been there a while. And the struggle is, right, I mean, there's zero lot lines, so there's no place but public property to put something like that, and they need, you'd rather have a dumpster than stuff thrown about, but, but there's a balance there because obviously it's impacting having, having a potentially, potentially having a negative impact on neighboring businesses, and so we want to reduce that and limit that as much as absolutely possible. So we continue to, to encourage them to try and complete their project as soon as possible.
Very good. So you'll follow up on those items. Ms. Mitchell, do you have any additional questions or concerns?
I do. Thank you, Your Honor. So I don't know that I really have a grasp of how many months that dumpster has been in front of that building. Do you have an idea?
Yeah, certainly I think, I don't think six months would be out of the, out of the realm of guessing. It would be, it would simply be a guess, but we can certainly verify that from when they first made request. But it's, but it has been a number of months, absolutely.
It, it has, and I just, I think about the massive construction project we had, and, and then now to have this dumpster here, and then the, the portable toilet, you know, of course, I, I want the workers to be comfortable and, and have what they need. Do we have any type of, I, I looked through our code and I, I didn't see anything that specified about portable toilets, but I'm still learning my way around. Are you aware of, of written code that we have or, or rules that are in place about where those can be placed?
I think it's in the, I think it's building code, but, but certainly if you look at, for instance, you look at any of these houses that are being built, right, and I know Mr. Girba's, because he's had a couple, he's got a new couple of neighbors, right, so, so they have, again, and they typically, again, that, they put it on private property, but again, downtown, there is, right, there's no, there's zero lot lines, right, so it's, it's either the building itself or public typically.
Right.
So, so it's difficult to, again, I'm not making excuses, I just, it's difficult to find a spot to, to put one of those, for sure.
Right. And I, I definitely want to support this, this enterprise. I'm very excited about Smokehouse. I'm very excited about the, the downtown living, and at the same time, I think a balance needs to be made and protect our current and existing buildings. I, I don't see how this is an acceptable solution to have that there, that portable toilet.
Understood.
You'll follow up?
Yes.
Very good. Anything further on this? Ms. McClellan?
Just a quick question. I know we talked about dumpsters with the fee book stuff, so that is all coming from MDOT, so the, the fees that, for that dumpster being there go to, to the state? Or is there-
We don't allow dumpsters on the street.
Okay.
So that's not our right, the, MDOT controls Michigan Ave.
Okay. So we didn't get any fees for the dumpster being there?
No. Yeah, I don't know if MDOT, I don't know if they charged for that or not. I don't know.
Okay. That's interesting. Thank you.
There's nothing further on that. We'll proceed then to the final discussion item, which is Maple Cove and the issue of an erosion permit. Mr. Campbell, are you able to comment on that at all?
No. Maple Oaks or-
Maple Oaks, excuse me.
So we did check into that, and the response we got from the developer that they will, this was last week, their original schedule, or, I mean, not the original, original, but, but most recent one, scheduled backfilling process sometime next week if, so I don't know if this, this was, this was last week, so being this week, so I don't know if the, the heavy snow, if that's delayed it or not. It'll be in sometime next week. Backfilling would not be 100% completed until the basements for the, the front few units are installed in the spring, and after the small stone, then afterwards, there'll be a small stone block retaining wall that will be installed above the finished grade.
Questions for the city man? Ms. Dillon?
Okay, so how steep is that drop right now?
It's pretty vertical.
Right. And they're going to put a three-foot wall there, a retaining wall?
Have they backfill it in?
Yeah, they're, they're going to back, they'll, they'll backfill, so they dug, the way they did it, there's a, basically a, a long hole, right, and that's, that's to put in, strategically done, to, to put in the basements all the same, right? So oftentimes when you see, well, we saw it at Cypress Ridge, right, the old school, where they would dig one basement, and then they start working and they dig another one through this way. This way, you don't have, you have, you don't have uneven and potential, potentially reduces the settling, for instance, because they're, you're, you're kind of starting at the same all the way through, and so they'll, they'll dig those basements, they'll dig a few of those basements, then they'll start backfilling, and then they'll, and I don't know exactly what the, off the top of my head, I don't know what the finished grade is going to be, but it'll be sloped down with a, again, a short stone retaining.
Okay. And I, I'm just very unclear about that. And it's just probably above my pay grade. So we have an engineer, both the city engineer and the building project engineers are in agreement that this is the, the safest way to do this, and it's, is this a normal practice in, in that type of construction?
Again, what I would answer that is saying that, I mean, there's a lot of different ways you can, can do things, and this is, this is the approved method that they've chosen to, to take.
Okay. And that the builder has chosen to take?
Correct.
And are, Mr. Rubel has signed off on that?
Well, the site, I mean, the site plan-
Right.
The, the site plan was approved as, as a, as a site plan as far as methodology. The, the site plan was approved as, as a, as a site plan, as far as methodology, there's different, like you said, there's different approved methods to do it. So we, I mean, as long as, as long as they're, they're putting it together, they're, they're following in line, so.
Okay. I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, we don't end up with sort of the North Ann Arbor sidewalk issue of, oh, wow, I guess we have a bigger, you know, slope than we thought.
Well, but again.
And so I guess that's, I just want to make sure that we're following the process and making sure that both the project is being done correctly and ensuring that this house doesn't slide down the hill or sustain any kind of foundational damage.
Certainly, absolutely. But I mean, as far as the finish, the finished product is the finished product. I mean, you're, I mean, that's a, the private develop, developer doing what they're doing. But yeah, we, we certainly will follow up and we'll see if, we'll see if, I mean, we can get a rendition of, of a drawing of, of what it's going to look like when it's done.
That would be very beneficial, thank you.
Okay. Additional questions, Mr. Girba?
Just a statement I was going to make on it. Both Maple Cove and Maple Oaks are coordinating together to make sure that that development, because they're both dependent upon each other in terms of how that grade falls out in order to put in the retention pond and everything else in there, so they're working together. A lot of the backfilling, the way they're doing it right now is because they had to remove a lot of peat and everything in order to get that and to be able to build the basement, so we were aware of that. And Washtenaw County manages the erosion aspect of it, so fortunately, that's not our bailiwick, it's more the county that's involved in that, too. So there are a number of pieces in there. I too am concerned about making sure that house doesn't have an issue, because if there was one in either Royal Oak or Lauder, or Westland or Dearborn Heights, where they had a similar problem, they dug into it and it was an issue. I'd be more concerned when it starts to thaw, and so we just need to be keeping attention to that. But at this point, there, everybody's coordinating together and working together to make sure that that, that area works, because it's going to impact one of the other developers, and I know what, they don't want to be stuck with the bill, so.
Right. You'll follow up on that then as well, Mr. Campbell?
I will.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions regarding the erosion issue there at one of our developments? Ms. Mitchell?
I guess I, you know, I went to a fair number of these planning commissions, and I, I don't think I ever heard it discussed or, or heard this, this drop. I don't know what the final elevation is expected to be, but it, it does seem to be quite a precipice. And if, if we need to go back and.
We discussed it.
We did, okay.
Yes, we did.
All right.
I brought it up as a separate issue.
Okay, excellent.
I think on numerous occasions.
Yep.
Okay, good. All right, I'm satisfied, thank you.
If there's nothing further, then we proceed to our second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, and it is regarding the, I would like to read part of the county soil erosion. Principles and standards. Since considerable soil erosion can take place during construction, development plans shall contain proposed erosion and sediment control measures. These measures shall be incorporated into the final plat or site plan and final construction drawings. Erosion and sediment control measures shall conform to the standards and specifications established by the Washtenaw County Soil Conservation District. The measures shall apply to all features of the construction site. Then, of course, it has concerns, and number six is, when land is exposed during development, the exposure should be kept to the shortest practical period of time. I would hope that somebody has paperwork on the shall part, because to say, when it, you know, it starts thawing, that's, all I hear is it shouldn't, and we hope it doesn't, and we think that we got it covered. I think that the city should make sure that the dots are dotted and the Ts are crossed on this permit as far as the city part, be it our building department and our city engineer on the shall parts. Thank you.
Additional citizen comments? Well, again, I, I didn't think it was unambiguous, but I think everyone on, on the dais shares the concern, and as such, Mr. Campbell will, will follow up to make sure this is being handled appropriately and that there's no detrimental effect to, to adjacent properties. We appreciate the concern. If there's nothing further, please note upcoming meetings, and at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:27 p.m.
So.
It's been moved by Girba, seconded by Dillon to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.